Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for November 6, 2023. I am the Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open-meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. After instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the building, of the room, and one to my left. With that, I will ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll start with Board Introductions. To my left...
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Katerina Kalavokas.
Good evening, Colin Nozel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Kat Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Okay, um, do we want to say anything about...
Colin was going to...
You're gonna, you got it covered?
Do that as part of his report.
Perfect. All right, so, um, let's start with Meeting Minutes. Meeting Minutes. Um, we've got some regular session meeting minutes for review and approval.
I move that the Board of Selectmen review and approve the regular session meeting minutes for October 2nd, 2023, and October 17th, 2023.
Can we split those up?
First for October 2nd, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0.
I move that the Board of Selectmen review and approve the regular session meeting minutes for October 17th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, I was not there for that meeting. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And I abstain. So that's 3-0-1. Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen, uh, review, approve, but not release the executive session meeting minutes for October 2nd, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0. Citizen and Business Time. Seeing no citizens here, we'll move on. Colin, why don't you take it away with the Town Manager's Report?
You've got it. I would like to just start by acknowledging the passing of longtime Tingsboro resident Augustus Gus Scammerix, who passed away last week. Mr. Scammerix was a loyal town meeting attendee, having missed his first town meeting in 41 years earlier this month. He was a regular volunteer at his church, a devoted beekeeper, former firefighter, and on a personal level, a huge supporter. He's survived by his wife Peggy, who is also our admin in the Building Department, and his presence at town meeting and regular phone calls to our office with ideas, suggestions, and critiques will be missed. The Sustainability Committee hosted a very successful Zero Waste Day this weekend at the elementary school, with more than 230 unique residents participating. This event gets bigger and better each time, and I think volunteers on the Sustainability Committee for their hard work. That's an event put together entirely by volunteers, so a big shout out to them for what they continue to do. Our Council on Aging this weekend hosted a very well-attended open house. It was a packed showing with a sampling of all the different programs and services that the Council on Aging offers. They had a bake sale. They've really been doing a lot in the last several months to advertise what is available at the Council on Aging. Recently, they sent out a mailer to all Tingsboro households highlighting those programs, and we have seen those efforts pay off in terms of higher attendance at events and more people taking care, uh, taking advantage of our programs. So, a lot of good things happening there. I wanted to just provide a scheduling note that the Town Hall and the Tingsboro Public Library will close at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, November 22nd. That's the day before Thanksgiving. Additionally, to accommodate a full staff training, the Town Hall and Tingsboro Public Library will open late at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, November 29th. We've already begun advertising this on social media, on the town's website. We have flyers up here, and we'll post periodic reminders, um, leading up to those changes. Town Planner and Economic Development Director Eric Salerno and I have met a couple times now to discuss ways that we can utilize the $100,000 earmark for economic development that Tingsboro received. He's currently exploring the use of some of those funds to do economic development. Hamphlets is the best way I can call, uh, consider them. Drakeit recently, um, hired a Tingsboro vendor, actually, to put together these mini folders that have different information on zoning, on the permitting process, on who to contact. Um, so we're, we're looking at that. We will likely issue an RFP for that, that type of service in the coming weeks. Um, but he is in full swing thinking about the best way to use that. We've also talked about potentially doing some placemaking signs throughout some of our, um, busier zones here in town, similar again to what Drakeit did. The town website project is moving on schedule. The project team right now is working on design development, and will have a draft to review in the next week or so. We're also planning now for the start of content migration, which will take place in the next month, and we remain on schedule to go live in February or early March. The grant-funded class and comp study is expected to be closed at some point in the next week. We've concluded the data collection piece last month and are now waiting on the final data from the Collins Center. They use the data that they collect from us to find comparable communities before they report back on the compensation piece. The 2023 Roads Program is winding down for the winter. Work to date has included the reclaiming, grading, and installation of a binder coat on Patriot Road. If weather cooperates, the contractor may be able to perform reclaiming, grading, and paving work on Deschino, which is also part of this year's roads project. In either case, the final coat will be installed on those roads in the spring, and we anticipate that at the end of the day, the project will cost roughly $1 million. The Massachusetts House of Representatives passed the Engrossed House Bill 2052, which is the DPW Special Act approved by Town Meeting in 2022. It was approved by the House on October 30th and will now work its way through the Massachusetts State Senate. In the coming weeks, my office will be forming a working group to begin identifying a transition plan so that the town is ready to implement those changes once it receives final approval from the Senate and signature from the Governor. We're currently working with the Engineering Department, the Highway Department, and the Sewer Department to begin soliciting proposals for the new DPW building. We did take a brief pause at the beginning of my tenure to make sure that all three facets of that building were aligned. We feel confident that we know exactly what we need. We've identified some potential vendors. Um, it'll be a two-phase project. The first phase will be an RFP for the actual prefab building, and then, once we have awarded that contract, we'll do an invitation for bids for the actual installation. There's some coordination going on because, as the Board may remember, the developer at 93 Kendall is pouring the pad and also bringing utilities to the site, so obviously we can't install the building until we have those pieces done, and Eric Salerno in the Planning Office is coordinating the timelines for that developer. The Tingsboro Police Department was awarded a $25,644 grant for the Municipal Road Safety Program. Funding through this grant comes from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and will be used by the department to fund traffic safety initiatives, including overtime traffic patrols, selective traffic enforcement, as well as various traffic safety equipment. We are currently accepting bids, finally, for the Bison Tenille Field Irrigation Project. We'll host a site walk on Wednesday morning, and bids are due back by November 22nd. We've seen a really good interest in the project. The consultant that we had designed it has helped kind of advertise that we're looking for firms, and so he shared that with vendors that he's worked with in the past, so I'm optimistic that we get a qualified, very competitive bid on the 22nd. Kat and I met last week with SOTEC Architects to begin the design of the $1.5 million partial demolition and moving of the Winslow School. They're working right now on getting a better understanding of the existing conditions, and will begin the design phase at some point in early December. Um, for those who don't remember, this involves taking down all but the core main building and, or original part of the Winslow School and moving that closer on the hill. So they'll help us put together the construction documents. They're gonna have firm construction estimates for us, once we've figured out what the design will be, and then they'll ensure that the project is constructed the way that it's supposed to be as well. A reminder that the Planning Department will host an information session on the MBTA Communities Act this Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM here in the Community Room. They have a second date for December 4th, same place, same time. Residents are encouraged to attend and also visit the Planning Department page on tingsbrowma.gov to learn more. The Fiscal Year 25 Budget Season is just around the corner. Finance Director David Andrews will join the Board at their November 27th meeting to discuss very early revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year and provide a status on where we stand today with our FY24 budget. We'll be starting the budget process slightly earlier this year with department head requests due by the end of December, and we'll have the draft fiscal year 25 budget schedule ready for your review at your next meeting, and that'll include the dates of tri-board meetings and so on. And then the last note, and I know I've been talking quite a bit, uh, we are a little bit over a month since I took over as Town Manager. To date, I've spent considerable time examining the projects and initiatives that were started under my predecessor or that were in the planning phase when I started. Uh, we paused the 180 Lakeview Hazardous Abatement Project until full funding is available for a full demo. Uh, in my opinion, that just provided us a better cause, since we'd be there doing it all at the same time. Uh, all of our other projects are moving forward. Um, some of them we hit, we delayed a little bit because I felt like there wasn't alignment or there were some aspects that we needed to think out a little further before we put projects out to bid. A real focus for me and for Kat has been making sure that we involve all of the stakeholders early on in the design of these projects so that we don't get hit with any surprises once a project is out to bid or ready to be completed. The next few months, we'll be busy with budget preparation and contract negotiations for every single one of our collective bargaining units ahead of the fiscal year. We're prioritizing efficiency and transparency and working hard to provide information to Board members and the public in a routine and timely manner, whether that's finalizing the agenda several days early or having a pack-in on the website before the weekend. And I do just want to take a minute to acknowledge the hard work that Jackie and Kat have done. They have kept the office moving, uh, working with them is an absolute pleasure, and we're in a really good place because of that. So, that's all that I have.
And so, before I open it up to the Board for any questions on that, um, I did want to just say that, um, I, I want to apologize to Colin, 'cause, um, when he started a month ago, um, he was coming in not clean, but I think the expectations were that he was gonna just hit the ground running and there'd be total continuity, and that wasn't really fair to, to Colin and Kat and Jackie. Um, there was a lot of stuff going on between town meeting and all of that. Um, so, you guys have done a tremendous job of making it seem seamless. Um, I know that there are some things where we should be pausing and take a step. It's not like you were here the entire time. There was a, a little bit of a gap, so, you know, um, I know you've been burning the midnight oil and, and working an awful lot, and I appreciate all your efforts on that. Um, so, I, I was looking at things and I'm like, "Oh yeah, we probably expected too much." And you've certainly lived up to those expectations, but it probably wasn't fair. So for the three of you guys, you've done a, you've just done a great, great job in making things easy on us as a Board, as we're going through a lot of stuff in the, uh, you know, day-to-day and with town meeting going on. So, you, you've done a great job. Uh, I, I acknowledge that we probably shouldn't have had those lofty expectations, but you've certainly, the three of you have, have certainly met those.
Thank you.
So thank you. With that, I will open up to the, to the Board. There was a lot of stuff that was on there. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I think Colin did come in pretty clean, so...
(laughing)
I don't really understand that comment. You know, I, I think, you know, the three of them hit the ground running, uh, worked well together, uh, and, uh, it just seems, everything seemed to be flowing, uh, you know, so well, um, and I just can't thank all three of you enough. Uh, you know, I think everything, uh, I don't know how it could move any, any faster or any better, so, uh, thank you again.
Anything else? Yeah, and, and merely just saying, 'cause I know other towns went through a change in Town Manager, and, um, things don't, don't go as smoothly in, in those types of situations. So it certainly was something that, um, is appreciated. So, and, and thank you for providing those updates. I also want to apologize, 'cause I asked Colin to give us an update on all those things, 'cause there were a bunch of things that we haven't heard on in a little while, and, and it was good to see, uh, where some of those things are going. Um, all right, so, Kat, did you wanna...
Right. Uh, my updates are fairly brief. Invitation for bids were due on October 18th for the Winslow School Hazardous Abatement Project. That went out to bid for a second time. We are in the process of checking references. Uh, however, the, what we've received so far have been, um, very positive, so we're confident that we are going to sign the contract, um, in the coming days and get started with that hopefully sooner than later. Invitation for bids for the police station parking lot, this was the second time this also went out to bid, uh, were due on October 18th as well. Similarly, we are, uh, checking references as well, and hopefully we'll have, uh, be awarding the project again in the coming weeks. Request for quotes for the police station HVAC system were due on October 25th. Uh, we are negotiating right now with the lowest bidder, and it is a, a local contractor, which is good. We also found out that the, the portion, uh, actually, the entire project, as we've limited the scope to just the dispatch center and the upstairs server room, for now, um, the entire project will be covered hopefully by a state 911 grant, so that's, that's positive news. Um, we'll find out soon, probably in the next month, whether we got, receive that or not. And then lastly, the FY25 capital request form was released to staff last week, and requests are due November 30th. And that's all I have.
Yeah, we are looking forward to capital again. Capital Asset Management. Looking forward to the streamline process. Any questions or further comment from the Board? Well, thank you for the update. Um, that was great. Are we, so, um, we're getting these on social media, right? We're getting these posted on social media. Are we getting this on neighbor-to-neighbor, or are we getting on a monthly thing?
Yes. It's a more condensed version.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but yes, we ran our first one on, in the October addition, um, so it'll feature basically a little bit from each of our meetings leading up to the deadline.
Perfect, yeah, no...
So thank you to the Neighbor-to-Neighbor for doing that for us, 'cause...
Yeah, we really appreciate that. Um, I think the residents will...
And it was a very good idea, Mr. Schneider, too.
Yes.
That was your idea.
Excellent idea.
So it was an excellent idea, and, uh, looking forward to it.
Okay. New business. We have a one-day license request for the Festival of Trees. Who has that? Is that Jackie?
Yes, it is. So, um, unbelievably, this is coming up very quickly towards the end of the year, and included in your packets this evening are three one-day liquor license requests submitted by the Recreation Director, Allison Page, for the Annual Festival of Trees. The Recreation Committee is requesting one license for Old Town Hall at 10 Kendall Road from 4:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, November 30th. They expect approximately 35 attendees at that event.
Did you want to do...
The other two requests are for the First Parish Meeting House, 214-216 Middlesex Road, from 4:00 to P, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM again on Saturday, November 25th, and Saturday, December 2nd. They expect approximately 150 attendees at that event, those events. Um, we requested comments from departments with jurisdiction, and there were no adverse comments. The Board of Health did note that if food was to be served, the Recreation Committee should contact the Board of Health.
Questions from the Board? I did note, this is just beer and wine, right?
Um, in their packet, I believe it was just, just beer and wine.
I think it's just, I just see the one check there. That was all.
Yeah.
'Cause some of the other, like, the block party is more than just beer and wine, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, now, these are just beer and wine.
Questions from the Board?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment.
That is more than welcome.
Great. Um, so I did see online that Allison is still looking for volunteers for the Festival of Trees, so, I mean, uh, if anybody has availability, you should get in contact with Allison Page. I'm sure they're also taking volunteers through their website and their Facebook page. Um, it takes everybody to keep these kinds of things running. Volunteering your time is very rewarding, um, so if you can, please make sure to donate your time for this event.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. Um, we, we, it's that time of year. Um, there's a lot of things that are going on. I know people are asking for, um, donations and volunteer time. It's worth it, so please, you know, these things don't happen without community involvement, so please get involved. Um, we talked about it at, even at town meeting. It's a challenge, and, um, this is a great town. This is another great event, and, um, those events work well when people get involved, so, um, I know, I, I know that they, they run a great, uh, program, so help out. Any other questions relative to this one? Can I get a motion?
I move that the Select Board approve three one-day liquor licenses for the Festival of Trees Recreation Committee at Old Town Hall, 10 Kendall Road, on Thursday, November 30th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and at First Parish Meeting House, 216 Middlesex Road, on Saturday, November 25th, 2023, and Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, also from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 4-0-0. If the Board will indulge me, I would like to go back to Citizen and Business Time. We did have somebody show up and...
You're very kind, thank you.
Well, I, we welcome residents. It's, it's...
You know, I walked in, I was like, "Whoa, low danger here."
(laughing) So if you could come up, um, introduce yourself, and then, um, you have, you can sit, or you can stand, whatever is most comfortable for you.
At this way.
Oh, sorry. Rony wants you to sit. Uh, if you can give us your name, address, and then...
My name is Jim Barrett. I live at 44 Highland Street. Hmm, what town this is? But anyway, um, in Tingsboro, obviously. Um, I've been seeing a couple of flyers going back and forth with this casino thing, and that's what brought me here today. Not to complain, but to kind of see what maybe is going on, and, you know, if there's something that the citizens can do, if you can let us know, maybe some of us might jump in. But, um, I did a little bit of investigating on my own a while ago, uh, when I saw the first flyer, and, uh, by the way, I'm not a flyer fan, especially when they don't put a name. But anyway, that being said, um, my biggest question with the casino is obviously, you know, the burden it's gonna put on our services, Police Department, that's gonna cost money for all of the residents. But additionally, since, and I looked up the, the dockets for the property lines and all that, and it looks like as soon as you walk out the back door of the building, you're in Tingsboro. So unless there's some agreement in perpetuity from back when the story that I heard, did y'all ever hear this story? If, if you did, just stop me, was that years and years ago, even before I lived here, um, there was a guy that wanted to build a dog track. So he went to the town and said, "Look, I'm gonna build this mall, and if you let me put it in Tingsboro, I'll put it in Tingsboro if you let me build a dog track." Now, whether it is, I didn't go bet this out, 'cause all of those people are long gone. But any case, they said no, and that's why the parking lot, he did that to kind of spite him. So the story goes. So that being said, unless there was some agreement between the Pheasant Lane Mall or whatever the authority was at the time that said in perpetuity that Tingsboro grants full use of this parking lot, does that not give us some leverage somewhere to say, "Hey, you guys are gonna be burdening our services," you know, "and, um, and it's not fair to put it on the, the residents of Tingsboro when you're gonna be making a windfall." And whether it's through Nashua, the town, which I doubt it would be, but that's just my humble opinion, or with the casino owners, because if you don't give them right to use the parking lot, oops, if we have that right. That's my two cents worth, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't, um, we don't have it on the agenda. Perhaps that's something that we can put on a future agenda. There are, you raised some good questions. We will certainly take them back. There have been discussions, um, between the town and the owner of the casino, um, and they have been, they have reached out to our public safety folks, um, to gather information, so we, we can put something on the agenda where we can, talk about that in, in open meeting. We don't typically, because we're not prepared for it and residents don't know that it's going to be there, that's why we don't typically comment on citizens' items, but we'll take it under advisement, and then we'll see if we can get it on a future agenda.
And if I may, imparting, 'cause I know you guys want to go home, too.
It's gonna be a while, don't worry about it.
(laughing) We're here for a while.
I got an upgrade here already. But, um, you know, I, I heard y'all mentioning compliments on using the Neighbor-to-Neighbor, you know, maybe just a little blurb in there that says, "So people know you're doing things." 'Cause one of the things, and again, I don't like flyers, because they don't, I mean, I like them on one hand, but I don't like them when they don't do a lot of investigating to find out what's really going on before they put a flyer out, you know? So they kind of try to make somebody look like a bad guy, and, and I disagree with that, so, um, and yep, you have my name and number, so if I can do anything, let me know.
Appreciate that. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the special exception.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to 5B. Discussion: Public Space Needs for Community Groups. Is this you, Colin?
Sure is.
Take it away.
All right, as this Board will remember, at their meeting in early September, it requested feedback from community about space and use needs specifically related to community and civic groups. In response to that request, our office solicited feedback from the community about the type of space they need, the reasonable fee structure or lack of a fee associated with that use, and the primary purpose of their need. The responses that we received are attached to the memo included in your packet. In summary, community groups are looking for low-maintenance space for regular meetings of their groups that do not require a substantial fee. This is a different type of need than the needs that are being addressed by the rental offerings at the First Parish and the Old Town Hall. Those buildings are designed for larger, more formal events, and due to their size and historic nature, maintenance on those buildings is a lot more costly. The fee structure has to match that, and rightfully so, we're a little more protective of what goes into those different buildings. I've included with this memo, and I'll walk through it, an inventory of the town buildings with details on their current use, the condition and the work needed to make those buildings more usable. But before I look at the inventory, I just wanted to note that, um, after reviewing all of the feedback, which again is included in the packet, it seems to me that the type of system that Tingsboro needs is similar to the one that our rec department previously used at 120 Westford Road, which was virtually no fee, I think they may have charged $10 per event. There was no host assigned. Uh, groups that had pre-registered with the rec committee and had booked their event there or their meeting were able to access the building on their own, reducing our costs because we didn't have to send someone. It was a low-maintenance type of building. We didn't have to do very much to protect it, to do any, you know, upkeep it, and so there was not a big burden in, on the town, it wasn't a big burden on communities. Uh, that building right now, and I'll talk about this in a little bit when I look at the inventory, isn't really in the kind of condition where I would feel comfortable offering that building up. However, we do have other buildings, uh, available for use, and one that I would recommend that the Board allow me to further explore through a policy, which we'll talk about, is the Council on Aging Building. I met with Barbara Roach. Uh, while they do have plans to eventually, once every other week and maybe more frequently, do some events later in the evening, right now they close at 4:00, um, there's no use in that building once the Council on Aging is closed. It's designed in a manner where everything except for the restrooms and the big meeting space that they have could be locked off to folks that don't need access. So my recommendation would be that, with some considerations, the Board develop a policy that would allow for community groups that pre-register with the town to ensure that they're really a community group, and the Board has to make some decisions on what that would look like. Use that building for either no fee or a minimal annual registration fee, maybe just something so, you know, there's some skin in the game in terms of keeping the building up. Um, and then we would be able to utilize our existing FOB system here at Town Hall for nominal fee, install a reader at the Council on Aging, that would basically allow us to program the building to be unlocked for specific events. The group would be pre-registered with the town, so we would know, okay, it was the Boy Scouts. If the next morning something was amiss in the building, we would know exactly who was responsible. I don't think that we'll have that problem. I don't think that we'll have that problem. I talked to Allison Page, and they had very minor issues at the rec building. I think we'd structure it a little more formally here. And we would even be able to eventually, once the Country Club Building, which is on the Sherburne Road Open Space Parcel comes open, the basement level will be used strictly for rec storage, but there will be community space available for use on the main floor of that clubhouse. So any policy adopted by this board at a future meeting could apply to both the Council on Aging and that rec building, depending on what rec's needs are. Before I go into policy considerations, I did just want to quickly run through the building inventory and let you know how I landed on the Council on Aging. So the spreadsheet that's in your packet and on the screen represents all of the buildings under the town's control. So this does not currently include any school buildings. This is only buildings that this board and my office oversee. Currently, in what was included in your packet, the board does have a policy adopted in two thousand and eleven that allows this building, specifically the rumor meeting in tonight and the kitchen, to be rented out. Practically speaking, we have never permitted that due to the side... Due to the needs of boards and committees. We've really restricted that to government meetings and programs sponsored by the library. Library has picked up in usage quite a bit. They're actually leveraging the Old Town Hall space quite a bit as well now, which is a great use of that building. So if you look at the far left, there's a column, yes or no. All of the noes indicate spaces where there's really not appropriate public meeting space. And again, that does not include boards or committees. We've reserved those rooms here. That leaves us the Old Town Hall, the First Parish Meeting House, the Council on Aging, the Littlefield Library, and potentially, once we spend some money, the old Council on Aging Building on One Daily Lakeview Ave, if that was something the board wanted to explore. It's not my recommendation, and then also the one twenty Westford Road Building. This sheet also highlights the condition of each building, and so you can see of all the buildings that have space that could be used by the public, the only ones that are usable and in good condition are the First Parish, the Old Town Hall, the Council on Aging. The Littlefield Library is usable, and we've spent some resources in there with help of volunteers from the rec committee and the historical committee in the last three weeks because they're going to use it actually for Festival of Trees. So we've made some improvements. It's a small building. There's a lot more work that we need to do, so I've categorized that as usable but poor. So really, all of the usable but good buildings that aren't reserved for a core government function are the First Parish, the Old Town Hall, and the Council on Aging Building. Again, the Old Town Hall and the First Parish, they're booked basically every Friday to Sunday. It's even more so in the summer. We're seeing a lot of weeknight events also being booked, whether it's the library or other groups. Those are generally revenue-producing rentals, and again, due to the nature of them, they're geared toward larger groups. So that really leaves us with the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging is already set up with chairs and tables. It would require very little accommodation on our part, except for installing a FOB reader to time the building's opening. I met with Barbara Roach, the director of the Council on Aging. She has no concerns about it. And I think by creating a policy where groups are required to pre-register, ensuring they're a community group under whatever parameters this board chose to set, they would check with our office. We would check with the Council on Aging, make sure that we're not double booking, and really would become a self-sustaining, no really serious cost impact. And it would address the need. If you read any of those letters, it's, "We need a place to meet once a month." Now, the one thing I will be upfront about, a couple of the letters talk about storage needs. We're really not in a place to offer storage. The challenge is, if I could find a closet for, say, a Girl Scout troop to store something, I'll have three other requests for storage, and I don't have three other closets. So it's also... It's a liability for the town to start storing things. So while I do understand that is a need, it's not something that we can easily address, but we can easily address, in my opinion, the meeting space. So I will take a pause before I look at a possible policy and ask the board for some consideration to answer any questions about these buildings or the feedback that we've received.
Great. Thank you. So with that, who wants to start? Questions, comments? Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
In regards to storage, you've mentioned that the new building over the Toll Brothers building will have some storage in the basement for rec. Is there any additional capacity within that basement for any of the other groups to carve out a piece of storage, or is the rec department going to absorb the whole thing?
I would imagine the rec department will absorb the whole thing. They have a lot of space needs. My additional concern about saying that we may be able to carve out some space is that at some point we won't have that space, and developing a fair policy would be challenging. However, I think it's an easy enough answer to say that the rec department absolutely will utilize all of the space.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm on the Sherburne Committee, and so I've talked to Allison about that too, and we've reviewed... We've gone through that building, and she really feels that she is going to be using all of that. So all of... Everything that she does is going to go right in that basement, so...
And further than that, you know, you're... I'm sure you're aware that over at the rec center now, there are a number of, for lack of a better term, sort of plastic sheds and other sheds that various committees, various groups have erected there to store their stuff. I suppose if that stays in place, you know, that they have a place to store stuff. I mean, it's not the most accessible, but it's a space.
On the storage issue too, I mean, I think we would have to look at and figure out what the town's liability is if somebody's things, belongings got damaged by rain weather, they got stolen, a lock was, you know, cut off or something. I think before we talk about storage, there's a lot of other issues that might pertain there that we would probably have to address.
Agreed. Yeah, and then, and I've obviously lost control of the discussion, but... And this is fine.
You opened it up for my old discussion.
No, I think on the storage side, the challenge, like with, you know, what we're going to have over in Sherburne is that it's hard to segment out, okay, this is for this group, you know, can I have this locked area? Because... And there's a lot of things that are going on there. I am concerned about, that was one of the things on my list, was storage, and I agree that for now, we should say that we can't deal with that. I know, having spent the better part of ten to twelve years filling up the back of my car with baseball equipment, football tackle dummies, and all sorts of things, that there are ways in which you can do it. It's not convenient, but there are ways, you know. I had to do it every day. And I think it's just, it's tough for us to be able to support both the meeting needs and the space needs with storage as well. But, you know, I think if we start by saying, "Let's first try to get the meeting space needs." If there are creative ways in which we can come up with, you know, something to deal with the storage for some of these groups, we could, you know, address that in the future. So, I mean, does anybody have any concerns about us saying, "Look, at this point, we won't provide storage because we, you know, we're concerned about liability, space, and all the other things, but we will take it under consideration in the future once we, you know, start to work through this."
What are we going to say for groups? You know, I'll pick an example. The Garden Club has erected a shed over by the rec center. Do we allow them to keep that space there for the time being until we come up with a more permanent solution? Do we encourage other groups to do the same thing? Do we discourage anybody from doing anything? What are we going to do, sort of a status quo today?
My take on it is, I would, if there's something already there, we're not going to ask them to remove it. However, I don't think we should be in the process of adding others. Like if somebody else says, "Hey, I'd like to put a shed on that location," I don't think we want to have fifteen sheds at, you know, on Westford Road. I think what we ought to... I think for now, we should say, "We're not going to provide storage space." If you already have something that's there, for now, it'll stay, but we're going to have to look at how we deal with storage on there, you know, in the future. That's my take on it. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, that's a really good point. A separate conversation will need to happen about the storage. The Garden Club is a great example because they're one of the only groups that has a shed at that building that got formal select board approval. You may remember that they do a lot of the gardening at, like, the police department, and so as a part of that, the trade-off was, we would allow them to have kind of a self-sustaining shed there. We have, I will... We have some groups that have kind of, over time, accumulated space in various places, and where it was out of sight, out of mind, it was kind of like a tacit approval. So the Garden Club is a very unique exception in that they came to the select board, had a proposal. We actually have, I'm sure it hasn't expired. I think it was like a five-year, like, no-dollar lease agreement that addressed concerns about liability. The rest of them will be something that as we make decisions about the future of these other buildings, we're going to have to... I mean, a great example, that Littlefield Library, as we were cleaning things up, there's still a lot of Boy Scout stuff in there from troops many, many years ago, some of whom may not even be involved. So we are going to have to have a kind of a cleanup discussion about it, but certainly I would think groups that already, like the Garden Club, have an agreement. For now, it's... Works just fine.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So on the Littlefield Library, so, you know, I agree, you know, there are some places there where it's a little bit, a few issues. But it's mostly in the basement, really. If you just use the first floor, it wouldn't take a whole lot to make that a usable space, and it's a very big space, actually. So I'd like to kind of see, you know, what would it take, in your opinion, maybe come back to us, you know, what it would take to, like, fix up the first floor. We could always just, you know, basement's a no-no. Yeah, the Boy Scouts, I thought they were going to take all their stuff out of there. I talked to them. The Zero Waste Day, six months ago, I thought. So, you know, maybe we should just, you know, discuss that with them. And I think they had everything in the basement, and so, you know, that, you know, with a mold problem and everything else, you know, they had books and everything else they're probably just going to throw out. So, you know, I think a little more exploration on the Littlefield Library. And I'd like to actually, if we're talking about, you know, groups coming in and, you know, using space, municipal buildings, do we feel it's appropriate to talk to the schools also and see what, you know, what they're willing to do with their space?
So I definitely think we should be talking to the schools. You know, one of the things that I looked at with the, with the groups that provided feedback to us, I found that there were a couple of distinct groups that were out there. There were the adult groups where, you know, they just need space. There's a lot of those things. And then there's the kids. And, you know, the way I look at it is, we have some buildings in town that are designed for children. The chairs are the right size. The bathrooms are the right size. You know, we're putting in, we just talked about the middle school being a building for the community. Well, these... The schools need to be part of the mix. And, you know, I think either we talk to, you know, we work with the school committee, or, you know, what I would like to see happen is probably have Colin just work with the superintendent, you know, Dr. Flanagan, and what do we need to do in order to have those types of things available? I know that there are some concerns about cleanup and making sure that the space is in as good of condition when they're done as when they started, but I think we can, we can deal with those types of things. I think we, you know, we can address some of those. But I think that while we have plenty of building space here, I think that the needs of the kids are best met by the school buildings and finding a way in which we can do that. I'm not, I'm not advocating that they take on that storage challenge, that still it's part of that, but let's figure out what we can do with the schools. So I guess the question to the board, is that something that we want to work with the school committee on? Or do we, do we just have Colin work with Dr. Flanagan for now and see what our options are?
I would say the latter. Let him start the discussion, and then, of course, he'll get the school committee involved, and then we'll get involved. It would be great to have a single policy between the school and us.
I'm seeing some heads nodding, just in case the folks can't see. And just to level set, Colin, you're, you're not looking for a policy at this point. You want some guidance from us to tell you what sort of things we feel comfortable with, give you some guidance so that you can go and work and answer some of these questions, and then we can draft something more formal.
Absolutely. Ideally, tonight was to broach the subject, and then there are a couple considerations I'd like to have the board discuss. And then that will allow me to work with town council to put together a policy for your consideration at a future meeting.
So I'm hearing that we want you to broach the subject with Dr. Flanagan relative to the schools in the mix. I think we've, I think we've given you guidance on storage.
Yep.
I do think you had some questions in there around who qualifies.
Yes.
And, you know, how we want to handle that. The question, the big question I had on that is, are there... What latitude do we have? Are there First Amendment issues? There are legal questions that I'm unclear on, and I don't know if we have any answers to any of those right now.
I think I have some.
Okay.
The board has wide latitude, understanding that the implications are, for instance, we'll use political groups as one. If you open it up to a political group, you have to allow any political group that falls within that subset. So if you say that it has to be a town committee, so i.e. the town Republican Committee, the town Democratic Committee, you would have to let both, or if there was ever to be a town Green Party or whatever else. And one way that you could do that as a part of this registering as a community group, you perhaps require five signatures or ten signatures from members of the community, because what you'd want to not... What you'd want to take into consideration is that if you are allowing, say, political groups, it probably makes more sense, since this is essentially no-cost rental, that they have to be Tingsborough groups. Not all of them, you know, and then beyond that, the board has to consider, well, are we allowing it to be just nonprofits? That may be challenging for some of the smaller community groups. And so you have lots of latitude, understanding, again, that if it's a subset of the same group of people, you can't say yes to one and not the other. One of the things that, in my conversations with town council, he wanted to make sure we were aware of is that we should be very mindful in the wording of these, that they be group meetings and not events. The concern then becomes, if you are, say, the town Democratic Committee, and you're planning an event where you're bringing in a speaker, say, he's not, or she's not a Tingsborough, that would open the door for you then to have to allow anybody to bring in a speaker, and then you kind of lose that town connection, right? This is designed for town buildings. Whereas if it's only for meetings, couldn't be ticketed admission, couldn't be, you know, openly advertised. Obviously, there's some gray areas, but the focus on meetings was important because that would really allow you to prevent the... What we're seeing in other communities where there are disruptive events intended to garner attention that bring in a lot of people from the outside. You certainly couldn't restrict the group to not having non-residents be at the meeting. But you would just have to be cognizant that if you choose to allow political groups, which many communities do, I've spoken to three or four communities where they say the town political party, and that is kind of what we're talking about, can have their meetings in these spaces. They stop short of allowing rallies. They stop short of... Certainly, you'd want to prohibit fundraisers. You'd want to prohibit sales of any sorts, which the two thousand and eleven policy that applies to this building does do that, and it prohibits it. Those are some ways that this board could protect itself. But again, we would just be careful in the wording to make sure that it's tied to a specific community group and not something beyond the community. Can you write out every possibility in a policy? Not really, but you can protect the town with certain language.
Yes, Mr. Schneider. You look like you have another question.
No, no, I just have a, well, a question or a comment. I don't know what that could have. And I only ask you about the Garden Club because my wife's in the Garden Club. But they have meetings. They, I know they're one of the groups that are asking for space, but on occasion, during a meeting, they will ask a speaker to come in that can talk about a particular gardening thing, you know, invasive plants in New England or whatever. So, but if I'm hearing you, we're saying we want to limit speakers that are not residents in the town.
No, I don't think you have to make that distinction. I think we just have to be careful about the wording to say, for instance, you couldn't have a ticketed event featuring a speaker.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, like, even the Boy Scouts likely would have speakers from outside of Tingsborough. What you'd want to be careful that doesn't become is a venue for people hosting, say, a political rally with...
No, I understand.
Yeah. But certainly, I mean, and we wouldn't have the staff capacity to check the residency of people coming to the building either.
Okay, so that's your distinction between meetings and events.
Right. We'd say something like, "Non..." It couldn't be ticketed. You know, we'd have to, we could... I don't know that we could say couldn't be advertised, but there are... It would be a focus on the meetings, no... And usually, you know, for the more, for what we're really concerned about, those rally-type events, when you prohibit things like fundraisers, sale of merchandise, sale of tickets, generally, you eliminate most of those problems, and town council made it abundantly clear, like you... Like I said, we can't write a policy that will prevent every type of thing from happening, but we can be clear on what our expectations are and tweak the policy as necessary.
Yes, please.
So I agree, and I see what you're saying. The focus needs to be on meetings, no ticketing, et cetera. The one thing that I think we should discuss is, you know, the meeting spaces are for the benefit of the town and the residents of the town. So while I don't think, obviously, we can say everybody in the group has to live in Tingsborough, I think we should have a discussion about formulating some kind of walls there that say, you know, these meeting places at this discounted rate really are for the benefit of the residents and the town itself, whatever that may be, whether they're benefiting residents, you know, Boy Scouts are usually geographically around the area, you know, Garden Club, they're gardening in Tingsborough, all of those kinds of things, or they're doing something to help benefit our community. I think there should be some kind of parameters around what type of meeting, if that's the correct way to say that.
Absolutely. And that's the question I asked town council, was, is there a way to limit it to just, not just Tingsborough residents, but include the focus? One of the things that we could do is a part of this, this concept I've developed of, like, the groups have to be registered with the town first. It could be similar to a citizens petition or something where you have to have X number of Tingsborough residents that sign the registration. One of the things we run into a lot at the Old Town Hall and the First Parish, and it'll be subject of another meeting when I'm sure Allison will ask us to revisit the fees, is, obviously, we have a reduced rate at the Old Town Hall and the First Parish for Tingsborough residents. It is very common that a Tingsborough resident will book the hall for a family member or a friend who isn't a Tingsborough resident. And if we're able to catch it, the policy says that that person can be prohibited, but it's very hard, obviously, for our staff to say, "Oh, wait a minute, you..." So that is a serious concern, especially since we're looking at, if there's a fee, we're, you know, we're thinking a very minimal, once-a-year kind of fee. I think that the emphasis on having that I think that the, the emphasis on having that registration application include 10 Tingsborough residents, or maybe five, 10 may be excessive, is one way that we can try to limit it, but you're certainly correcting. That will be a challenge. It's a challenge we see at the Old Town Hall.
Is it possible to do something to the effect of, you know, ha, at least half of the members of your group have to be a resident in Tingsborough? Something like that, so that we know that they are part of the community, especially at the reduced rate, or?
Yeah, as long as we apply that to everybody.
Yeah, you know, just so that we make sure that the groups really are, are focused to the residents and the town.
What about frequency of, of meetings? So if, if we're going to charge them a one-time, you know, yearly fee, I don't want them ha, thinking that they're going to have meetings on a nightly basis. I don't think it would happen, but there's going to be some, you know, a lot of these are the, here's the challenge, right? Ninety-five percent of the groups are easy, right? You know, we got the garden clubs, the Boy Scouts. We, we got the folks that we all know and we're sitting there going, yeah, that's who we want to support. It's the five percent that, you know, that might be the outliers, that we just need to make sure that we address those so that we can be consistent. So, you know, I don't, I think if we're going to limit and have the, um, the cost be very nominal, we're probably going to have to limit how often they can meet. And it can't be something that's, you know, more than once every other week or something like that, you know, just X number of times per year. I do think we, we're going to need to have some sort of revocation of their permit or whatever if they fail to clean up or, or whatever. And some guidelines on how we might deal with that logistically.
Yep.
What else?
The, um, the only other, we don't need to decide this tonight, um, but it would, you know, I, I would like to get an idea of what the board thinks is a reasonable annual fee. I think that a reasonable one-time annual fee, I think $25 is more than reasonable. I think it could be higher, but I think this is a new initiative, so I'm certainly not opposed if the board wanted to start with the $25. And I mean, that really will include maybe once every two months, we have a real deep clean of the space. This building is already, we have staffed custodial over there, so like it's getting cleaned. But 25 may be enough. Basically, the thought was that that would give these groups some skin in the game in terms of the use of the building and add, you know, a layer of incentive to, to follow the rules. So I can explore 25.
Could you, could you work under the premise that it'll be a nominal fee? It won't exceed a hundred bucks, but to sit there and say, you know, be, we'd like to maybe get it between 25, 50, something like that. But until we can know like what the parameters are, and then perhaps if you can check with, you know, if it's council on aging, what, they might have concerns sitting there going, you know, 50 bucks isn't going to do anything if, if they leave a mess. You know, it's, it's one of those things. So, um, I would feel comfortable saying, look, we know it's going to be a nominal fee. We're going to try to make it as low as possible, but we don't have to set that now until we can see what the parameters are. But if you could work within a, something that's going to sit there and say, we know it's not going to be more than a hundred bucks. We'd like to get into that 25 to 50 range if we could. And then, you know, maybe we can start to hear from residents as to what their thoughts are on, okay, it's a yearly thing, it'll probably be 25 to 50, maybe it's something where, you know, if there's no issues and we don't need the cleaning, you know, you can roll it over into the next year. It's like, it's like a deposit or whatever, like a security deposit. Yeah, go ahead.
A lot of the different groups could be seasonal as well. So could we maybe say, you know, 25 bucks for six months or 50 bucks for the full year? That way, depending on their needs.
Yep. Yeah, I think we have some options, but it sounds like everybody's in agreement that we're not, we're talking a nominal fee, which I know, I was in these groups, everything, every penny matters because you, you know, you're sitting there going, there's only so many kids that you're spreading these costs across. But be a nominal fee, we'll try to figure out how we can make it something that's reasonable with certain parameters.
Only other consideration, and again, I don't need a decision from the board, but just something to start thinking about. At the same time, I bring a draft policy for your consideration on this. I'd also like the board to consider amending your 2011 policy, which provides for community groups to rent this room, the meeting room. And also needs to be amended because it does offer up the Littlefield Library, but it puts it under the purview of the Board of Library Trustees, which is not the correct purview. My request will be to amend this policy to basically get rid of this policy, defer to our other one, and stick with what we've been doing in practice, which is these rooms are restricted to boards and committee meetings and programs sponsored by the Tingsborough Public Library. So I don't need any action on that, but that's something that I plan to ask the board.
Anybody have any objections to that?
No, he's been here a month now. He's asking us to do a lot more work. Fine with me.
Yeah, I mean, we have a hard enough time getting this, it's hard scheduling meetings. I know there's a lot of conflicts. So I don't, I don't see any issue with amending that policy. Do we need to talk about the, um, the groups on any of that? Because I, I think council's going to give us guidance on it, but I didn't know whether anybody had any concerns about which groups.
I don't think we need to decide that tonight. I think we got, Colin's got a lot more work to do to kind of put some parameters around that.
I will define the, the applicability will be community groups registered with the town. We'll all incorporate some language around requiring half of their membership be Tingsborough residents. We can tweak that obviously. And I'll operate with the understanding that if this policy allows for political groups to use it, it'll be any town political group. And again, that can be amended as we move forward. Like I said, most towns, some towns even actually post on their town website and on the, through the clerk's office, meetings of the town Republican Committee, the town Democratic Committee, so we wouldn't be outliers on that.
Yep.
And as long as we provide equal access to any town group, you'd be fine.
Okay. Did we, have we given you enough guidance to go do your homework and, um, dig a little deeper?
Absolutely. I, I, to recap, I didn't hear any concern about us limiting the use strictly to meetings, not events. The fundraiser piece was already prohibited in your other policy, so I assume that that was fine. But we'll move forward the policy that focus, and again, for those watching at home, nonprofits have the, for a, a larger event, have the reduced rate at the Old Town Hall, the First Parish, if you were planning a bigger, a bigger event.
And this, this is just for the meeting things? If there were things where they wanted to do a fundraiser, you know, the Boy Scouts want to sell wreaths or whatever, you know, doing some of that, there are other locations for them to do that? Or is that something that we need to consider as part of this? Because we're just dealing with meetings, that would be a fundraiser slash an event, so it would be outside of this. And they still wouldn't have a location for that as part of this?
Correct.
Everybody's good with all that? I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads.
Perfect. I've got my marching orders.
It sounds like we've, we've given you what we think is important for guidance.
Perfect.
All right. The ban approval, short-term borrowing for the middle school building project, is that you?
It sure is. As this board is well aware, the town has been utilizing a series of short-term borrowing to fund the construction of the new middle school. We've worked with our project team at Leftfield and Hilltop Securities, which is our borrowing and bond council, to tie these short-term bans specifically to the cash flow for the project, what we're spending minus what we're being reimbursed in real time from the MSBA, to make sure that we're only borrowing what we need to keep the project moving. I mentioned already that this takes into consideration the reimbursements that we receive regularly from, from the MSBA. We are now due for our next short-term ban, which sold last week. And following your approval tonight, will close on Wednesday. The borrowing amount is $30 million. This will cover our previous $7 million borrowing and the remaining 23 million will be put toward our current construction costs. Again, that's all less what's already been reimbursed by the MSBA. Our spending plan with this from the beginning has been that once we reach completion of the building in summer of '25, we would roll only the town's portion into a permanent borrowing, and that's when we would start paying the interest. The interest rate on this borrowing is high. Interest rates are high right now. It's 5%. Looking at some of what Matt had put together when this project was being sold to the town, I think he was looking at a four, worst case scenario, four and a half percent interest rate, so not super far off. And obviously, you know, because we're waiting to do the permanent borrowing, we expect to get better interest rates at that time. So I did confirm with bond council, we've done this before, that as long as I pull up the vote of the select board sheet on the screen, the clerk can reference it in the motion, which is included in the packet, and not have to read the entire thing. And we have about 20 pages of signature documents for this board to sign following your approval.
I'll open up to the board for questions, comments. I think it's important, this is the short-term borrowing at 5%. The long-term borrowing, what do, what are we, what do we see right now? And then we would not be rolling this until 2025?
Summer of 2025.
Summer of 2025. So,
Correct.
you know, more than a year and a half away. I know you don't have your crystal ball out, but what is the current long-term rate that we, that we would be looking at?
We expect to be back at or below the 4% range by summer 2025.
4%? That's what we think we're going to get for a long-term rate?
Correct. And when, um, I don't know if this slide actually ever ended up getting presented at the Maytown meeting where this project was approved, but Matt had put together a tax bill impact and the calculator used a 4% placeholder. So as long as we end up at or below that 4%, the projections that we made to town meeting back in 2022 are good. And that is how Matt calculated reducing the town's, or increasing the town's contribution, that 1 million from new growth to reduce the borrowing, that was all factored in. So we certainly expect to be in that 4% if not lower range. I think that the first 7 million borrowing we did, the interest rate was three, maybe three and a half. So we're seeing some fluctuation, but Hilltop acknowledged when they gave us these that we would, but even before we sold, they knew that we were going to be a little higher this time around.
Mm-hmm. And we're rolling that 7 million into the 23 million to get to the, to the 3 million? Do we have to roll that? Is that, that borrowing was, was done? It was for a set period at 3?
Yes. Yep.
I assumed so, but I wanted to confirm. Okay. Other questions, comments?
None.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the $30 million borrowing as presented and in accordance with the document entitled Vote of the Select Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. That carries 400. Okay. Vesper Country Club, change of manager and officer. Who has this one? Jackie?
I include in your packet this evening is an application from Vesper, Vesper Country Club for a change of manager and change of officers for the on-premise all alcohol license issued to the facility at 185 Pataquett Boulevard. That's the main facility. And the wine and malt beverage license issued at 999 Island Road, which is the ninth hole clubhouse. This application request does not require public hearing and as such was not advertised. Additionally, the applicant is not required to send a butters notice and the requested new manager would be Bryant Lemire. You may recall a change of manager request was submitted on May 22nd, 2023. Copies of this request are included in your packet for your reference. No action was taken by the ABCC at that time. The ABCC has requested an update for both the manager and the officers in order to have appropriate signatures on file.
Any questions, comments from the board?
None.
Pretty standard stuff.
Standard.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the application for the change of manager to Bryant Lemire and change of officers for Vesper Country Club located at 185 Pataquett Boulevard and 999 Island Road as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. That carries 400. Requests for comment, uh, first nine Malvern Avenue?
We have three of these this evening, Mr. Chair, and they're all relatively similar in the way you handle these. If you want to group them all together, we can discuss them all at one time.
That sounds fantastic.
Okay. So for nine Malvern Ave, the, this is for a variance for zoning. Include in your packet this evening is a request for the comment from the zoning board of appeals on an application for a variance under section 2.12.5. That's the lot area. For construction of a 20 by 20 addition to an existing home in an R2 zone. That is that one. Again, on all of these, you typically do not make any comments on these. So on the 31 Ting Road, this is to subdivide an existing property. This request is coming from the zoning board of appeals on an application for a variance under section 2.12.41, methods of calculating lot area for the subdivision of a property into two lots for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling in an R2 zone at the 31, again, Ting Road. The third one is for a special permit from the zoning variance to combine business dwelling and standard, general standards for parking and loading area. So this one is from the planning board on an application for a special permit under section 2.1.30, combined business dwelling and section 3.1.0.41 for the parking and loading area to redevelop an existing shopping slash office building by converting the second floor office space to seven residential apartments with associated parking and drainage. So again, on these typically, the board does not make any recommendations at this time. The first two from Malvern Avenue and 31 Ting will be heard by the planning board on November 9th. And for the 130 Middlesex, the planning board did already have that hearing on Thursday, November 2nd.
As mentioned, we don't normally comment. Does anybody feel that this warrants any comment?
No comment.
Seeing no comment, we will choose to make no comment at this time as well. With that, um, discussion slash approval for 250 Middlesex Road parcel subdivision or divide?
Divide. All right. So as this board probably remembers, the town has been awarded two separate historic preservation grants for the Littlefield Library for the Mass Historic Commission. The first one was $55,000. That funded the front roof replacement, masonry work and painting work. The second one was just completed. That was about $44,000, which funded the rear roof and also the very historic front door in the beginning, or in the front of the building. As a requirement of these funds, which the town was well aware of at the time that we accepted them, we were required to place a deed restriction on the parcel to protect the property in perpetuity. It's a standard deed restriction that Mass Historic drafts up. In fact, in May of 2019, after applying for the grant, town meeting approved an article which granted the board permission to place that deed restriction on the parcel. When we completed the first project, there was a delay in the deed restriction being placed because when Mass Historic went to craft it, they realized that the Littlefield Library and the Winslow School sit on the same parcel. And so if they placed a deed restriction on it, it would also restrict any future activity on the Winslow School. At that time, we had already applied and were in the pipeline for this additional 44,000 that we got in the next round. And we were about to close our fiscal year books. We hadn't received the reimbursement of 55,000. That's how the grant is. It's a reimbursement grant. So the state said, look, you're in the pipeline for another 44,000. You're not going anywhere. We'll reimburse you the 55, which we received, so we could close the books. And we'll do, take care of the deed restriction at the conclusion of this project. There was some back and forth with our assessor's office. There are oftentimes with these historic sites, meetings that did subdivide the parcels in the 60s or the 70s that never made it to our assessor database, so they were taking their time to find out if that happened. The bottom line is that never happened. They are the same parcel. We've now completed the second round of grant funding. And the state will not release that $44,000 until the deed restriction is placed. So that means that the board has, um, a couple of options. The easiest option and my recommendation is that the board authorize me to file an A and R with the planning board to subdivide the parcel. We would do it so that the Littlefield parcel has exactly the minimum lot size with the minimum frontage required. So we would make it a very small parcel focused on the Littlefield. That deed restriction would go into place. That would allow us to get the $44,000 that we're waiting for from the state. If the board decided to not do the subdivision, we would certainly lose out on the 44,000, I'm sorry. If the board decided not to do the subdivision, it could either allow us to go forward with the deed restriction on both buildings, which would make the one and a half million dollar vote of town meeting to demo part of the Winslow School move it forward, null. It wouldn't be allowed under the state's deed. to demo part of the Winslow School move it forward, null, it wouldn't be allowed under the state's deed restriction. Or, the town could say, we're not going to do the deed restriction at all, we would certainly forego that forty-four thousand dollars that we're waiting from. Once we get recast certified, that forty-four would come out of it. We also would likely open ourselves up to having to reimburse the state the fifty-five thousand dollars for obvious reasons. We haven't reached out to them to ask that specific question, but my guess is we would need to. We would also certainly forego the ability to ever apply through that grant program again. We've done the entire envelope on the Littlefield Library and this program doesn't do interior work, so Littlefield is good. But there may come a time down the road where we want to apply for a new roof on, say, the Winslow School or do some exterior work at the Old Town Hall or the First Parish. Certainly, if we don't follow through this deed restriction, the state won't consider us eligible in the future. And we'd open ourselves up to losing that ninety-nine, certainly the forty-four thousand dollars, but I feel comfortable saying that the state would likely ask us to reimburse the fifty-five thousand. So if the board is so meant, is so inclined, it could authorize me to file an A and R with the planning board to set the lot size to be exactly the minimum with the minimum required setbacks, or frontage. We would place that deed restriction on the Littlefield, the Winslow School work could go forward as pa, as we planned. And if there was a need down the road for us to do any type of movement on the Littlefield, we could pro, we could broach that with the state historic commission at the time, since they're the ones crafting this deed restriction. Essentially, in my talk, in talking with town council, there are other communities where they found themselves in a similar situation and they've been able to show, for instance, that moving the Winslow School closer to the road makes it more desirable for us to move the other historic building because it creates a campus. So there, there are ways that if we really needed to move the Littlefield, we could. But the easiest way to move forward for this board is to prove that, authorize me to file the A and R, the planning board will review it. We've already had the site surveyed a few times as a part of the two fifty Middlesex Road Subcommittee and also actually as part of the Public Safety Building Study Committee. We'd file the A and R, we'd get our money, and we'd be able to move forward with the work that we've already started on the Winslow School.
Okay, let me open it up to the board. Questions, comments?
I agree with Colin, I had a good long conversation with him earlier. And he's recommending option one, the subdivision with the A and R, and I think that's, that, that's what we should do. Allows us to get the money and, you know, and Historic will be happy that we're doing something for the Littlefield Library also.
Any other questions?
I agree with this, Corhane, I don't know that there's any benefit to not doing the subdivision of the, of the property and foregoing the fifty-five and possibly giving the, the fifty-five, yeah, forty-four and the fifty-five. It, it seems like a no-brainer that, that we'd want to subdivide that, preserve the right to get that additional forty-four and, and then give us the flexibility to do what we want with the, with the Winslow School parcel.
Option one just makes sense.
Yeah, and I would just add, I think, you know, you've got it in there, if, if you look at what we approved in twenty nineteen, it was to put a restriction on the Littlefield Library, that's what it said at that time. So this would accomplish that, which is what voters told us at that time. And then also still allows us for what the townspeople voted on in a May twenty, twenty twenty-three town meeting. So, I think it accomplishes all of those goals, so I, I think option one is absolutely the way that, that we should go at this time. So do you need a motion or, okay?
If I could just get a motion to authorize me to file an A and R with the planning board for the minimum lot size with the minimum frontage?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries four zero zero. Okay, appointment, commission on disability. And if I skip something, make sure, because sometimes I get, I jump.
So I'll take this one.
Okay.
Our office was notified last month that a commission on disability member was resigning from their position on the commission effective immediately. Currently, Rayanne Jasek serves on the commission as an associate member. So she is very familiar with the commission, their charge and current projects. Staff reached out to Ms. Jasek to gauge her interest in serving as a full-time member and Ms. Jasek confirmed that she's more than happy to fill this vacancy.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, may I make?
Yes, please.
I just want to note that this resignation is from Jack Trotter, who was a founding member of the Commission on Disability. So I just, I personally had the pleasure of working with Jack, I want to thank him for what he's done for the Commission on Disability. Certainly a big loss, but Rayanne has also served on the commission for a while, so she'll be able to.
Very disappointed to hear that part of it.
He's getting way too famous to continue to serve.
Yeah, well, I, I really liked having, having him in that role and he will be missed. So that's a, that's a shame, but.
I agree.
You know, one of those situations, we certainly understand and we thank him for his service. It's been a, a great help, there's been quite a few things that have been done recently. So I know I'm appreciative about that. Thank you for bringing that up, can I get a motion?
I move that the select board appoint Rayanne Jasek to the Commission on Disability effective immediately and for a term to expire next June.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries four zero zero. Contract approval, Covanta Waste Disposal.
Thank you. Including your packet for your review and approval is the FY twenty-five to FY twenty-nine Waste Disposal Contract with Covanta out of Haverhill. Tingsboro has been a part, probably for at least the last eight years of what they call the Covanta Eight, which is eight area municipalities that collectively negotiate the disposal contract. So we have, our hauling contract is with Republic, they're the ones that come and pick up the trash. They take it to the disposal site of our choice, which is Covanta and has been for at least eight years. The contract that they are proposing mirrors our previous contracts, except it now formally incorporates some of the new waste bans, including of course mattresses, which we've already not been collecting through the trash stream. The FY twenty-five price represents an increase of two and a half percent over our current rate and then future years would be tied to the Consumer Price Index, which is standard. That brings our FY twenty-five price to ninety-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents per ton. As a part of the contract review, my predecessor did explore switching to Republic Services, which recently started their own, or expanded their disposal capabilities. But they won't go any lower than a hundred and four dollars per ton. They've tried to sweeten the pot by saying that we'll pay less in the long term with our hauling contract because there are less wait times. None of it is really substant, substantive and also Tingsboro will have to soon negotiate a new trash contract with Republic. So tying ourselves to their attempts to sweeten the deal didn't make sense. As of today, all the other communities in the Covanta Eight, with the exception of Burlington and Tuxbury, are moving forward with Covanta. Burlington and Tuxbury, I'm sorry, yeah, Burlington and Tuxbury are currently renegotiating their Republic contract and they're hoping to leverage that with the hauling piece of it. But it doesn't make sense for Tingsboro to go that way. This is a five-year contract, so even though the Town Manager Act gives me contract authority, it's up to three years. The select board by town meeting vote is authorized to enter into contracts in excess of three years. So, I'm looking for approval of the board this evening on the disposal contract as presented.
Open up to the board, questions, comments? Trash is expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Let's figure out how we throw away less.
No, I just, my, my question on that is, so Tuxbury and Burlington see potentially a benefit of tying hauling and, and pickup and, and disposal together, but we're not, we don't.
So we're a one-day-a-week trash pickup. Tuxbury and Burlington have multiple days, so the delays actually impact them a lot more than they impact us, which is where they're paying more, if a Republic truck sits at Covanta for longer, it's now impacting the second day of their pickup. Whereas Tingsboro only has a Monday pickup. I don't mean to sound rude to the other communities that use Republic on Tuesday, there's no impact on our Tuesday if Republic has to keep a truck at Covanta later because all we're getting from Republic later in the week is that mist trash pickup, which on, which is on a much smaller scale. So, they're still not going to see a price lower than one oh four per ton. They're hoping though, that if Republic is bringing the trash to a Republic site, they'll get prioritized. Whereas at Covanta, they're waiting in the line with everybody else. Very welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the MOU with the sewer commission for the design, that's not right.
Nope.
It's not here.
We've moved on.
Yep. My apologies, my packet doesn't have this one.
I can grab, I can read it a few.
Put it up there. I move that the select board approve the contract with Covanta for fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-nine as presented and authorize the town manager to execute the contract documents. Thank you.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries four zero zero. Now, contract approval, MOU with sewer department regarding the shared garage.
Yes, this, so including your packet is the final MOU with the sewer commission for the design, construction and use of the new DPW building, which is funded by an investment from the Capital Asset Management Committee and an investment of up to three hundred thousand dollars from the sewer commission. The agreement ties it to thirty percent of the total building cost, since that's what we've calculated they'll be using. The agreement has been reviewed by town council and by council that was hired by the sewer commission. It reflects the intent of the project and outlines the specific design considerations, there's no surprises. My understanding is that this was the draft before the sewer commission presented, it was presented to the board by my predecessor, there were no changes. Since then, the, their council added a specific reference to the DPW Act, which is working its way through the legislature, but no serious issues. So, looking for approval from the board on this tonight.
Open it to the board.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, so the, the history of this is, is the sewer commission was going to build their own building and they were looking for a lot to build it on. And, once we really looked at that and when this, once that lot actually fell through, we decided, you know, we started looking at the needs for the highway department slash DPW department and said, you know what, we need a lot of space also, so why don't we build this garage together? So, the sewer commission, I think it's, they have a certain percentage and the highway DPW has a certain percentage. That way we get a lot of efficiencies as part of this. And then we have the warehousing project behind the highway department that's going on and, and the builder there is going to be kicking in. A few services, they're going to, they're going to hook up the sewer and the water. And I think they're going to do a pad and also give us some money. So, we tried to like, between the three organizations, pull the money to do this as efficiently as, as we possibly could. And I'm glad you, you know, and there's a lot of detail here, the sewer department wanted to know exactly what they were going to get and what the DPW is going to get. I think it's a great document, I think it covers what we were, what we've been discussing. And I also see there's a lot of reviews that the sewer department wants to have here, which is, which is, which is fine. You know, we wanted to keep them involved in this because a, a part of it is theirs. And so, it looks great, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the MOU with the sewer commission for the design, construction and use of the DPW facility as presented and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement on the board's behalf.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries four zero zero. Old business, Washville Car Wash as Built Review.
Yes, the agenda that keeps giving. Including your packet this evening is a letter from our town planner, Eric Salerno, noting that a final site inspection at the Washville Car Wash was completed by TEC on behalf of the town and all the issues that were required to be addressed in their special permit have been addressed. The note from Mr. Salerno does indicate that the owner has agreed to address the location of a few trash bins on the property, which we were concerned limited ADA access around the site. But aside from that, the site's in good condition, the business has been open for nearly a month now with no issues. The next step in the special permit process would be for this board to accept the as builts. We would notify the building department and that would formally close out the special permit, special permit process.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seems straightforward. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board accept the as-built for Washville Car Wash as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries four zero zero. Select Board Reports. Mr. Schneider, do you want to kick us off?
I was, I was going to mention about the Zero Waste Day, but Mr. Corhane had mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting, so no, I will pass.
As you said, garbage is expensive and we took a lot out of the garbage waste stream as Zero Waste Day, so, you know. I believe there's like over two hundred and thirty cars that came to that, a great event, residents are really stepping up. You know, they, they, they see this now, it's about their fourth or fifth one I think they've had and, you know, it's a great response by everybody. I would like to just talk a little bit about town meeting. So first of all, as we mentioned, Gus wasn't there. For people that weren't at the town meeting, there was two seats there that were reserved. It was really, you know, looking at that, you know, not seeing Gus was a kind of a little shocker for me. My first, first time I came to the town meeting, he pulled me aside and, and, you know, talked to me. And every town meeting since, before the meeting started, we always had a small conversation and he told me what he thought. He'd never, you know, you know. And so, we always had some good conversations and, you know, he'll definitely be missed. You know, I thought the town meeting, well first of all, for people that weren't there, you know, there's over three hundred people that attend, attended, I didn't have the exact number, but it was definitely over three hundred. You know, the school obviously passed, all the select board warrants, you know, passed at that meeting. And I also thought it was, you know, a good meeting from the sense of, I thought everybody was very respectful at that meeting. I think it was a, you know, when you really look back at it, you know, there's always going to be some passionate people there, have some passionate discussions, but overall, I think everybody is very respectful. And it was a really good town meeting. You know, and the thing is, is, you know, like, you know, somebody said for the, the warrant articles, you know, citizens, citizens petitions, you know, it's kind of strange only having two to three hundred people deciding, you know, how we spend our money. And it is, but, you know, but the thing is, that, that's our form of government. Town meeting is our form of government, that's the way it is. And if you really want to participate, you know, you really do need to come to town meeting. I know many of you out there, you know, if you're watching this tonight, you're, you've been involved, you know, in, in the town here. And I know many of you have also told me, you watch the meetings, but you don't go to town meeting. So, you know, we just want to encourage you to go to town meeting, it's the first Tuesday in May is our next town meeting. Any recommendations you have for us on, you know, how we can give you more information? I think we did, we've done an excellent job, but there's always room for improvement and anything that you have, you know, please, please ask. And I just really hope that we can, you know, increase the attendance. I, I think it's, you know, once you attend a few of them and if you go in there with the information, that was the one thing that always bothered me when my first town meetings is, I didn't know what was going on. You know, now you can just go on the internet, you know, at our, at our web, our front of the webpage and you can start getting, you know, the information that you need there. We've got the pre-town meeting, but again, any other recommendations you have, please bring them forward. And I encourage everybody to go to town meetings, thank you.
I'll be brief, just a reminder that if you have the time and the opportunity to do so, please, please volunteer for the Festival of Trees. It is a lot, a lot of fun, it's a great opportunity to meet other residents, to make connection and to help the town. So please, if you have the opportunity to, please volunteer for the Festival of Trees. You can do so by getting in contact with Allison Page directly here at Town Hall or on the Festival of Trees Facebook website.
Excellent. All great topics, I do have, Gus was always, I don't have as much time knowing Gus, but he was not shy about letting his opinion known. And he was always that first person that I wanted to make sure got his seat, so I would make sure that he was taken care of. And he will be missed. Town meeting, I'll go one step further to what you said, because I, what you said was excellent. If there are recommendations from residents on telling us what we could do to make it so that you would come to town meeting, we want you to, to come to town meeting and be prepared, and I think we've got the.
prepared, and I think we've got the, the being prepared thing is, is a little bit, but we really want to know how we can make town meeting a better experience for people. You know, there are some things that, that are nuanced with it, and, and we, you know, we'll work with the moderator, work with the town clerk to make everybody's experience better, but the more people that show up, the, the better it is. It's more valuable. On Zero Waste Day, my, my back is finally healing up a little bit, because I always get the heavy stuff. But definitely folks come out and volunteer. There, there's one other one that's kind of near and dear to me. I got involved in the town initially because my kids and sports, and I'm hearing that youth baseball, which I spent a boatload of time, working on the fields and coaching kids and doing all that, they're struggling to get people to run the program. And that's, I mean, we're talking about Tingsboro and baseball. You know, the, the, the American sport, that's not Tingsboro to struggle to have people to come out. So I know that people are busy. I know that there's a lot of things that are going on, but this is a great community, and it's a great community because people get involved. So get involved. There's plenty of opportunities. If you're not sure how to get involved or where you could get involved, let me know. I did see somebody who is new to town posting on social media saying, hey, I'd love to volunteer. I thought that was awesome. Love to see a lot more of it. So I'll get down off my soapbox for now, and our next meeting, we have a, a special meeting on the fifteenth. That will be a quick one, and then there is a meeting on the twenty-seventh. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the select board enter into executive session under exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, all non-union positions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rule, call, vote. Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That carries four zero zero. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody.